Okay, here we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this edition of the State and City Council on Monday, June 3rd in the year of our Lord 2019. Would everyone please share with me the place as I stagger to my feet? And here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, that's the first sign that things are going south, Mayor.
I was watching a film about the United Nations involvement in Bosnia in the 90s, and one of Owen Wilson's better performances. And all of a sudden, there was the United Nations instead of the United States. Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. Who's here? Everyone's here except Counselor Hook, and she is excused absent. Are there any additions to the agenda? Are there any declarations of ex-party contact, complex of interest, bias, relative hatreds, anything? Okay. Uh, we got some appointments tonight. Uh, Michelle, for library board reappointments, Michelle Wonderling and Susan Brandt. Neither of those ladies are here tonight, but they are -- and I see vigorous nodding from the library director, so those are people you'd be okay with having back on your library board.
We'd love to have back, yes.
Okay, so I would ask, I guess, that the council affirm a reappointment of those ladies.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'll offer a motion to reappoint Michelle Wonderling and Susan Brandt to the library board.
Seconded.
A motion and a second to appoint -- reappoint Michelle Wonderling and Susan Brandt to the library board. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none will prepare the motion passed, and those ladies are reappointed to the library board. Citizen comments. Um, I have one this evening. This is a time when people can bring just about anything to the council, and there's a time span, three minutes, and state their name and address. Ron Sturba, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members and city staff. I was here speaking with the group maybe six months ago, representing a group in Salem promoting airline service. I wanted to give you an update on how we've been doing, and yeah, things are moving along quite well. We partnered through the Salem area Chamber of Commerce, and we're awarded a half million-dollar grant from the Oregon Department of Aviation on April the 4th. This money is used to pay for our recruitment effort, consultants, and necessary studies. In addition, it adds $75,000 to our minimum revenue guarantee. It provides for marketing budget over $250,000. Enormous news, after nine months of work, we're excited to be moving forward with these resources in place. Our group has met with three airlines down in Arizona last month. It was United, Delta, and Alaska. And the progress has been good with two of the airlines, and that progress is just starting to work its way between the two airlines and the group here in Salem. I'm not in that negotiation part, but I'm here to let you know that we have over $600,000 in personal pledges of money to bring the airline in from the four county area, Marion, Polk, Lynn and Benton Counties. 1.1 million passengers use PDX in one year as a destination or departure point. An estimate at a half million vehicles are on I-5 to 205 to PDX. That's a lot of vehicles in a year, and a lot of carbon emissions. I'm here to say if you or any of your friends would like to come to a meeting, it is at Salem Airport's terminal at 5:00 PM on Wednesday evening to listen to the progress of an update. My update here is a month old, and the new one's going to be coming out on Wednesday. I encourage you to come along. If you go to a website, we'll have up-to-date information. It's called flySLE.com. And that'll give you an up-to-date also place where you can pledge money. And the monies, when they are pledged, go into a fund that says to the airlines, "We really believe in our city, and we would like you to come." And if the airline does come, and its startup fees, it's going to take money that it needs to get the progress started in Salem. As it makes money, it pays back, and any monies that were used, the pledges, will be paid back to the people. And I want to thank you very much and give you an update, and if your city would like to contribute a amount of money, I understand it's in the matching form when it gets into the group for the airlines to be established in Salem. Now, one last note. My figures, as I received them, right now, based upon 1.1 million passengers out of Portland, that would fly approximately nine aircraft out of Salem, fully loaded with 150 passengers a day in each aircraft. So that's nine planes, 150 passengers. That's a lot of people, and it's a lot of cars taken off the freeway, and a lot of emissions that are eliminated. I want to thank you for your time this evening, and appreciate it. Yes, Mayor?
Ron, uh, have -- did you folks look at, well, probably Delta Connections or Alaska as a horizon? Uh, those are -- you looking at SkyWest putting a plane, a couple of planes a day to Salt Lake, is that kind of the proposal, like it was before?
Well, it is. The, as the numbers that I remember, the number one location for folks going down to California from PDX is the lower southern part of the LA area. Number two is Las Vegas, and I believe Phoenix is number three. Salt Lake is, no, San Francisco's four, Salt Lake's number five. I can't be absolutely guaranteed, but those are five names that have been in the circle of one to five on cities. As far as horizon, yes, those would be one of the aircraft that would be used, the smaller aircraft that would come in. And it would be, hopefully, either two different airlines or one airlines that's really starting to move a little bit larger aircraft, like the Airbus A320 and the 737. The new version with the better engines on it are very capable of flying out of Salem, and they're quieter, too.
And they're grounded.
Um, I will, like I say, if you come on Wednesday to the airport terminal meeting, they'll have an update on the information, which I'm waiting for.
All right. Sounds like fun.
Thank you.
It was a neat.
Thank you very much.
It was a neat way.
And we're looking forward to bringing a lot of folks from state into Salem Airport and getting them out.
Okay. Did you, Ron, one more question. Did you folks look at the patterns and whatnot from Eugene Airport, where they go to, where they, which hubs they try to catch, like San Francisco or Seattle or wherever?
Yes, the consultants have done that. I don't have the exact locations, but 6% of flights or people moving somewhere in the United States out of those four county areas, 6% fly out of Eugene. 2% of the people drive their car to Seattle, catch a flight somewhere else in the world. That was the breakdown that we got from Volair Consultants, who is the group that's taking care of that.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, folks? Any other aviation nuts? I've got a, my youngest son flies for SkyWest, so I get to hear the aviation stuff all the time.
I like that. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else? Mr. Sevens, the younger?
No.
No, nothing? Richard, the patient observer? All right, let's go. Uh, thank you. Consent agenda for May 20th. Everyone's had a chance to look at that, I hope. And, uh, where is it? There it is. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve consent agenda as written, as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as it was presented, and no discussion on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none will prepare the motion passed 4 to 0. We're now going to a public hearing, and lucky for me, the script is numbered so that I can't mess it up, and we'll go with this. It's a, it's certifying eligibility and electing to receive state revenue sharing funds. Oregon Revised Statutes Number 221.770 requires two public hearings to be held to hear from citizens regarding the use of state revenue sharing funds distributed to the city of state. The first hearing was held at the Budget Committee meeting on May 13th, 2019. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony on the proposed use of the funds. Before opening the public hearing, we'll receive a staff report. And who has that tonight?
Andy.
I can do that.
Mr. Parks. I should have noted visiting us tonight, and thanks for being here. Go ahead with that, if you would, please.
Sure, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, and good evening to you and to council and staff. Just real briefly, and it's in your packet, the information related to the use of those dollars. It's roughly $816,000. Majority of that is in your general fund for police and other general purposes. The balance is in the state, or, excuse me, in the street fund for street maintenance. Be glad to address any questions you may have.
Anyone that hasn't seen that ORS 221.760, that provides that cities within a county having more than 100,000 inhabitants must provide four or more of the following municipal services to be eligible to receive state sharing revenues: police, fire, state construction, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, planning, zoning, and subdivision control, one or more utility services. And we qualify. We have at least four of those. Somewhere out there. Okay. So the public hearing is now open, and anyone who wishes to, anyone that'd like to provide testimony regarding the proposed uses of state revenue sharing, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Anything? What, what other possibilities are there? What, what else could we do with that? I just, it's a question.
It's a fairly open-ended question. Yeah, the street transportation dollars, nothing. I mean, they're going to be used for streets. The other monies are general purpose dollars, and you can do however the council desires. But in the general fund, they're ultimately, you know, you've appropriated them accordingly and consistent with, with the intent.
Yeah, this, well, as we read on, we find out that the, most of this money's been already plugged into, into various budgets.
Yeah.
So this is a little bit of a formality, but it's all right. We need to do this.
The state requires us to do it, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, legislatively, it would be really nice if you guys would get rid of this, because it sucks up a lot of time, 258 cities going through the same process every year. Without, I've yet to see one person ever testify on this issue.
Is this a time that we can ask questions? Are we still in the public? Where are we at in our process?
Public hearing, yes. It's a public hearing.
So do we need to wait? Yeah. Okay.
There's council deliberation.
You could, let's move on. I think she can say whatever. No?
Yes, no. Well, I mean, it's, it's time for the public to comment. So at this point, we could close the hearing and go to council deliberations.
Public is making a lot of, there's no rapid forward motion toward the microphone, so, but hey. Hmm. There's no further public, there's no public testimony. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. Now, Jordan, you had a question or thought?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So these six things down below, that is what we have decided the money is going to be used for, correct?
Well, there are six services that are part of a menu that the city must provide four or more of those services, and ultimately to qualify to receive the state revenue sharing dollars, which the city of state does provide more than, you know, four or more. So by that very designation, you, you qualify and are eligible, and the city must go through a process to certify that you are providing those in order to receive, you know, the dollars. How you spend the money is the second part of that. Again, if you have money that the gas tax is in the street fund, it's by statute to be used for street-related maintenance. The other dollars are general in nature. You have those in the general fund. They're going to your police, to administration, street lighting, all of those functions that are within the general fund. There isn't a specific designation outside of, you know, designated grants. So to say that those dollars are being used for this specific, specific service or not, you know, it would be, it's like a pool set of money. It'd be hard to, you know, make that distinction.
Mr. Mayor, another question. So if someone were to come up during the public hearing, they would be advocating to change or to, like, you just made a comment that this process was unnecessary, so is it something that we need or can change, or?
Well, the process is necessary because legislatively, we have to do this.
Okay.
It's a statutory requirement, and that's, I mean, to Andy's point, it's kind of jumping through hoops.
I mean, this has been something that I've seen for 30 years, and, and my point being that I have yet to see anybody comment on this publicly. You know, it's the overall budget that, you know, people would be, you know, paying attention to, and this is such a small sliver of the overall budget, and it is something that once you're in government long enough, you see that some things just are always the way they are, whether they make sense or not. This is one of those that, in my opinion.
And to answer your question, I don't know what you would testify against other to say, yay, I support us getting this money, or no, I don't want us to receive the state allocated, which, you know, you could always make whatever case you want, so. To Andy's point, that's probably why I don't see much testimony. There's not much to really say.
Gotcha. Okay. Some nice clarification for the people watching it on YouTube later on.
Sure, absolutely. Where's that money go? Well, we've got some options tonight. One, to approve the attached resolutions to comply with state revenue sharing law and be eligible to receive the funds. And there's some, there are a couple of motions. Offer a motion to approve Resolution 989, and, okay, an offer a motion to approve Resolution 990 declaring the city's election to receive state revenue, state revenue shares.
Mr. Mayor.
Revenues. Thank you. Yes.
I'd like to offer a motion to approve Resolution Number 989, certifying the city of state's eligibility to receive state shared revenues by providing the necessary municipal services. And I'd also like to offer a motion to approve Resolution Number 990 declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Thank you.
We do both at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Second.
Let's try it. Okay. We've got a motion and two motions and two seconds.
Second.
To approving the state's eligibility to receive state shared revenues by providing the necessary municipal services. Dun, da, da, dun, dun. Election to approve state revenues. Okay. Any discussion? Are we okay with this? And if we are, Alyssa, could you poll the council on this one, please?
Sure. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Okay. Let's move along here. See what's, what's next. Okay, let's move to the next green tab. Oh, we have, let me get back to my agenda so I can see what I'm supposed to be doing. It's not easy, folks. Ah, there it is. Next thing is city of state in 2019, 2020 fiscal year budget. And Mr. Parks is going to lead us through this.
Yes.
There's another statement.
There's another statement.
Number two.
Oh, look, it's number two. Woo, this is so good. Oregon budget law, uh, city of state in 19 and 20 fiscal budget. Oregon budget law requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body prior to its adoption of a budget for the ensuing fiscal year. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public input and testimony concerning the budget approved by the city of state and budget committee. Before opening the public hearing, we'll receive a staff report. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. On May 14th, the state and budget committee approved a city budget for fiscal year 19, 2019, 2020, including levying the city's established permanent tax rate of $3.32.88 of assessed value, as well as a local option property tax rate in the amount of 60 cents per 1,000. This measure was approved by a state and voters May 17th, 2016. Within this budget, I want to also, you know, advise you that local budget law allows the governing board to make changes to the approved budget during the adoption phase as long as the appropriations in a given fund are changed by no more than 5,000 or 10% of the appropriation amount, whichever's greater. So within all of your funds, that amount's going to be 10% of a given fund. The total budget that was approved was $24,149,549, with total appropriations of $20,410,204, with a general fund budget of $5,228,400. And be glad to address any questions you may have on the budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone that'd like to provide testimony regarding the budget approved by the city of state and budget committee, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Dun, da, dun, dun.
I don't hear any, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not hearing any either. But, um, is there anyone at all who wants to say anything about that budget? It's a pretty good piece of change, but it's what we need to keep this thing going, so. Okay, um, if, if there's no public testimony, I want to close the public hearing. Questions, thoughts from?
Mr. Mayor.
Staff and staff from council, please. Go ahead.
Um, Counselor Hook's not here tonight, but I did make an agreement with her during the budget committee hearings that her concern be addressed, and that one of her concerns within the budget was the allocation for the covered bridge being moved to, somebody correct me, because I don't remember exactly where, I want to make sure I get this right. How was, what was her concern? Was the $100,000 allocation in?
Yeah, the $100,000 previously was in the Parks Fund, and the budget that was approved moved the $100,000 back into the facilities fund.
Correct, that's it.
And there's no money in the facilities fund that was appropriated to do the bridge improvements.
Correct, but that doesn't, that doesn't restrict us having access to that money going forward. Should we do something with the bridge? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that point of clarification, since she's not here.
Yeah, that became an item of some concern toward the end of the, of the budget process. Uh, let that not be left out. Okay. Anything, anything else? Let's see.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to offer a motion to approve Resolution Number 991, adopting the 2019-2020 budget, making appropriations for the 2019-2020 fiscal year, levying taxes for the fiscal year, either as presented or as further specifically amended.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second to adopt the 2019-2020 budget with appropriations, general fund, so on and so forth, as presented. Any discussion? Alyssa, back to you, if you would, please.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Oh, nice.
We are thrashing through this.
That was perfect.
In spite of my slowness, uh, let's see. Appreciate, is it appropriation adjustments, the next one, 988?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Adopting appropriation adjustments to fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Um, let's see. Mr. Parks again, please. Andy?
Sure, Ms. Mayor, thank you. You know, so during the course of, you know, the year, there, there becomes.
No, there's not, no. Sorry.
Becomes situations where, you know, that are unexpected, you know, expenditures are needed, and we've covered these through the budget review process with you and the budget committee as well, through the year-end estimate. And within that year-end estimate, you, you know, may have noticed, you know, some areas where it was projected that the city department or fund would go over the original appropriation. Detailed those situations out for you in the attached staff report. The most significant items that are there, one involves the police department in investing dollars into the PERS UAL, moving, you know, suggesting moving those dollars in this fiscal year, and that's in the form of a transfer, and those dollars will be made up by savings within the police department budget overall, so, you know, no net increase in appropriations, just a, you know, a reclassification, if you will, of the dollars. The other most significant one involves the, moving forward with the sand filter project. Again, that was an unexpected project. In, in order to keep that system working and address it timely, requires an appropriation adjustment. That is moving some dollars from another project, but then increasing the overall appropriation by taking money out of contingency to ensure that you have adequate appropriation to complete the project this fiscal year. The others are just fairly nominal-type dollars relative to the overall, you know, scope of each of the department budgets, and you'll be, you know, certainly glad to address any questions you may have on those.
All right, thank you, Andy. Um, there any, there any citizen comment on, on this item? It's, it's easy, unexpected events and issues. It's why you have contingencies, I think, isn't it?
Basically, one of the reasons, yes.
Yeah, big reason, yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Okay, adopt the resolution as presented?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and offer an emotion. An offer and a motion, right? So, I've got an offer of a motion to approve Resolution Number 988, adopting appropriation adjustments to the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Was there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to approve the...adopt the resolution as presented. Is there any other discussion? Yes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Andy, would now be an appropriate time to kind of discuss the potential impacts to the police PERS fund through Senate Bill 1049, as far as down the road, how this is going to impact the stabilization account necessity and that kind of thing.
I think it's really premature to, you know, to look at any of the state legislation until it's really gone through the, you know, the court system. I mean, to be honest.
Yeah.
You know, I think PERS is in such a quackmire right now, and will be for some time, that, you know, the projections that are there, I think, are to be taken seriously in terms of, you know, this impact, this cost is just going to continue to rise until it's ultimately, you know, this whole thing passes.
Right.
You know, and it's, you know, the analogy that, you know, I've seen for a number of years, is, you know, a snake eating a significant-sized meal, and that meal just working itself through the system, and it's just a very unpleasant thing to be dealing with. But those, you know, entities that are ultimately dealing with it as proactively as they can, which is to move dollars into pay the UAL sooner rather than later.
Right.
And just from a pure financial standpoint, the legislation that is deferring this, again, is...it's part of why you're in the situation that you're in. And so, to the degree that, you know, you as a governing board can direct additional dollars into the UAL, I think is something that will pay off in the long term for, you know, for this city and others to do the same. I mean, the reality is that you are borrowing. The city is borrowing seven, you know, whatever those dollars are, that, you know, and it's around $2 million for the city in terms of a, you know, unfunded liability. You are effectively borrowing that money at 7.2%. And so, how many people would continue to defer paying that versus trying to, you know, pay it down like a high-interest-rate credit card?
All right. Thank you.
That's a good question.
Go ahead.
Oh, that's a good question on Mr. Counsel Patty's part.
Had a good answer, Andy. Thank you for...we'll do that. We'll do that one another time, maybe. Maybe several other times. Okay. Um, let's see. We did everything but a vote. Alyssa, on 988, please.
Sure. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Motion passed four to zero.
All right. Thank you. The next thing is Resolution Number 992, selecting replacement inflation index for the city's retirement plan. Mr. Parks?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were notified by Milliman that the city's current retirement plan, which has a, you know, a requirement to have a benchmark inflation index to be used to adjust the retirement benefits for employees, that particular index ceases to exist or has ceased to exist. So, in order to make annual adjustments, the city is required to update, you know, their plan documents to include the selection of, you know, an appropriate index. You know, Keith and I have shared, you know, some communications about what that might be, as well as back to Milliman. There's really, you know, a couple of options. PERS has selected one of, you know, those options, which is a more...a bigger, you know, type of index, I guess, you know, larger cities, that type of thing. All-inclusive, if you will. The suggestion that we're having for you would be to use an index that takes into account smaller jurisdictions. And in fact, you know, the index that would be preferred to go to would be something like small cities that didn't include the size city of Portland. But they've changed it so that ultimately, cities that are 2.5 million and above can have their own index. Those that are below end up in the small cities. So, the region, Portland, Salem, your area, the rest of Oregon, basically, all falls into that index that we're suggesting to you. And, you know, I don't think from a fiscal impact standpoint that there's going to be any significant difference, because they've watered it down so much by the way that they've ultimately put these indexes together. But I think of those that are available, this is the most relevant and pertinent to the city of Salem.
Thank you, Andy, of course. Let's see. And they're suggesting, what, a minimum annual adjustment of 2%? Okay.
Well, yeah, let me...if I could, let me clarify that. Your plan right now includes a maximum of 2% per year. And what they...the way the plan works is they look at the two-year average, the most immediate two preceding years, and up to 2% they can do. Once it hits that index, that average is more than 2%, that difference above the average. So, if it's 3%, then 1% would be carried over to the next, by, you know, next year or two, then look at the number. And if, at that time, it was 3%, another percent, you know, so you have this rolling number of 2% so that there could actually be a decline in the index, and you would see some inflation adjustment. So, the 2% is already written into the plan. There's no changing, you know, that particular item. The only thing that's being requested is really to select an index that they can use to then measure to ultimately determine what the adjustment should be, not to exceed 2% per year.
Ever get into a situation where we have actual deflation, overall prices falling?
You had some of that back in 2008, '09, '10, you know...
Those were...that was just housing, wasn't it?
That was, I think, the overall, you know, very close to where there were not social security rate increases, I think, for a short period of time.
Okay. Thank you. I'd forgotten about that, luckily. Go away.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Andy, I had a question regarding the CPI alternatives. As far...between national, the western region, Colorado, and all the states west of Colorado, and the last one that we're going with here, how much do they typically deviate from each other? I mean, what are we talking about?
Yeah, it's a great question, and, you know, and I spent just a very limited amount of time looking at it. And I think, you know, the...there is some small deviation. The national average is going to be the smoothest, right? Because it's got the most data points.
Right.
And the smaller that you get, so, you know, ultimately, you know, the western region, small cities, is going to have the fewer data points. It's going to have, say, the most volatility, too.
Variation, yeah.
But I think as you look at that over the long term, all that variability smoothes out, and it's very, very much consistent over a long...you know, if you looked at a 20-year period of time, there's not going to be any significant variation between those.
And that's also probably the most relevant to us as a city, correct?
Yes, it is going to be the most relevant to you.
Gotcha. And just to jump in, that was really the conversation we had in selecting this, was let's try to make...this was the one we felt like was the closest to what relevance would be to us, and we could say was appropriate to use. Makes sense.
Okay. Resolution Number 992, what would you folks like to do with that today? Unless there's more discussion and input.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion to approve Resolution Number 992, placing the inflation index used to annually adjust the city's retirement benefits.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 992 as presented. Any discussion? Anyone? Alyssa, one more time.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right. Thank you. Next and almost last thing, the second consideration of ordinance Number 1033, amending land use code regarding fences in the commercial and downtown zones. Can we do this tonight, Keith, without...
Absolutely. I'm going to step in for Dan. I don't know if I can do the mannerisms or the clicking that he does before he talks, but I can give it my best, if you will. So, the issue before the city council is the second consideration of ordinance 1033, legislative amendments to the land use and development code to allow fences in front yard within commercial and downtown zones. The city council held a public hearing on May 20th and approved the first consideration of the ordinance, but there was an amendment that has been made. And so, the change has been included in this draft, and so we bring it forward for second consideration. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Council deliberations on this one.
I like it.
Still like it. You like it? Okay. Still like it.
I was just curious if Counselor Patty got all the materials captured that he wanted to capture.
Counselor Mullen, I'm satisfied with the materials that are in this ordinance.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the second consideration of ordinance 1033 as revised. Sorry. A second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the second consideration of ordinance 1033, which amends the land use code regarding fences in the commercial and downtown zones. Any discussion? Okay. Okay? Let's go with this. Alyssa, one more time. I keep saying that, but it's still one more time. Go ahead.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Motion passed four to zero.
Okay, thank you. We're down to communications from mayor and councilors. I don't have anything else this evening. How about you folks? Communication from city staff? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. I just wanted to let everyone know on, I believe it's May 24th, the Army Corps of Engineers released their draft proposal for the Detroit Dam. The proposal is what they call "in the wet," which is where there'll be no drawdown of the Detroit Dam, so it won't have an impact on our water. So, that issue is addressed, but I do want to say that the Army Corps is having, I guess you'd say, a listing tour, is going to different areas to talk about the proposed draft and the proposed work. The meeting will be held this Thursday, D-Day, June 6th, at 5:30 here in the community center. So, if anyone is interested, they can come here, the Army Corps will present their recommended proposal for the Detroit Dam.
What time is that?
If any of you read...
What time was that?
5:30.
5:30.
Newspaper comics and Reed Peanuts, for the last, maybe 60, 70 years, Schultz has put their Snoopy crawling through the surf and the obstacles on the Normandy Beach on June 6th. He does it every year. So, if you read the newspaper, I guess if you don't, it's okay, too, but that's in there. Look for that every June 6th. Okay. Future agenda items, public hearing on the transportation master plan, another public hearing on annexation, and the fiscal year 2019-2020 fee schedule. And if there's nothing else, does anyone have anything else? Let's go home.